Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the organizational meeting of the Council of the City of Norwich, December 1st, 2015. If you all would please stand. We'll be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by our Superintendent of Schools, Abby Doliver.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you all would remain standing, we will have Donna Rolston sing our national anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
And if you all would remain standing for just a bit longer. Almighty God, we ask for your blessing upon the members of this council as we assemble here in this chamber to conduct the ongoing business of our city. With your guidance, we will strive to ensure that all our decisions are for the common good and your inspiration will instill respect, compassion, and thoughtfulness in all our deliberations. Give us the strength and wisdom to lead by example as the people's representatives and that peace and harmony will mark all our proceedings and keep us faithful to the trust placed in us by the citizens of your community. Amen. Thank you all. If you all take a seat now.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. First order of business is to administer the oath of office to the council members. So if they could please rise. Please raise your right hands. You have been chosen councilmen, men and women for the City of Norwich. Do you swear you will faithfully discharge the duties of said office according to your best skill and judgment? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations.
And now it's my distinct honor to be able to introduce your new city council. We start off with Peter Nystrom, Joanne Filbrick, Tucker Braddock, Stacy Gould, Jerry Martin, and returning person is Bill Nash. I welcome you all.
And now we'll administer the oath to the Board of Education members. If you could please rise. Raise your right hands, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge the duties, according to law, of the Board of Education members to the best of your ability? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations to you all.
And now, Abby, would you please introduce our new Board of Education?
Robert Aldai, Andrew O'Leary, Dr. Lvette Chapuluso, Joyce Wardens, Dennis Klopak, Aaron Daniels, Kevin Santani, Margaret Beacott, and Susan Thomas. Welcome to the board of education.
And now I'd like to administer the oath to the treasurer, please. Do you solemnly swear you will faithfully discharge, according to the law, the duties of treasurer for the City of Norwich to the best of your ability? So help you God. Congratulations.
And now it is my great honor to introduce you to our Norwich Treasurer, Michael Gualtieri.
Election of the Council President Pro Tempore.
May I please have a motion and a second to bring this forward? Alder Nash, Alderwoman Gould. Is there discussion? Hearing none. For the interest of the public, Peter Nystrom has been nominated for the position of Council President Pro Tem. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
I will administer the oath now. President Pro Tem. Have it been chosen President Pro Tem for the City of Norwich? Do you swear you will faithfully discharge, according to the duties of the said office, according to your best skill and judgment? So help you God.
I do.
Appointment of the city clerk.
May I have a motion and a second, please? Alderwoman Gould, seconded by Alderman Nash. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Be it resolved that Betsy Barrett will be appointed town and city clerk of Norwich for a term of two years. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Appointment of Corporation Counsel.
May I please have a motion and a second? Alderman Nash, busy down at that end. Alderman Martin. Is there discussion? Hearing no discussion. Be it resolved Michael Driscoll be appointed Corporation Counsel for the City of Norwich for a term of two years. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Adoption of the council rules of procedure.
May I have a motion and a second to bring this forward, please? Alderwoman Filbrick. Second. Alderman Nash. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you all very much. Well, that's the first time we've gotten a hand for passing rules. So not bad.
We brought our friends.
Not yet.
Mayor's appointment of council members to standing committees. Public Works and Capital Improvement Committee.
May I have a motion and a second to bring this forward? Alderman Braddock, seconded by Alderman Nash. Is there discussion? This is an appointment for the public's benefit. H. Tucker Braddock, Stacy Gould, and Joanne Filbrick. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you all.
Public Safety Committee.
May I have a motion and a second, please? Alderwoman Gould, Alderman Martin. Is there discussion? Hearing no discussion. Members of the Public Safety Committee, Bill Nash, Gerald Martin, and H. Tucker Braddock. All those in favor? Unanimous. Abby Doliver, would you like to say a few words?
Those of you who know me know that I'm never at a loss for words. I can't put this up. It's my book called The North Star. So I'll say something toward it after. Someday I'll read it to everybody. As a lifelong member of the Norwich community, I am thrilled, honored, and a little emotional, too, to have the opportunity to be part of this swearing-in ceremony. I would like to thank Mayor Henchy for bringing forward the idea of combining the ceremony for the City Council and the Board of Education. Every member of both of these elected bodies has a critical role to play in Norwich's future, having an impact on everyone in our community from birth on. I am pleased that you are starting your terms together. Consider yourselves to be partners. Consider all of us to be partners on the road ahead of us. As I reflect on this moment and thought about what I might want to say, I began by asking myself, what might it mean to serve on this Board of Education? I found out that school board members make up the largest body of elected officials in the United States. We entrust you to set the policies of our most treasured institutions, our public schools, our most treasured possessions, all of our students and staff. Our school district is very complex and is one of the largest employers in our community. The decisions that you will make, you will be making, will affect jobs, resources, and most importantly, the education of all of our children as students, in addition to the many adults who we have as students as well. Together, we will set the tone for a positive climate of education in our community. As we do this, we will also encourage the community's trust in our school system. You will serve the needs of all of our students, regardless of their abilities and backgrounds. Maximize and respecting your diverse points of view will be critical to your success together. Your success can be identified by positive and engaging relationships with me as your superintendent, our school staff, many of whom are here this evening, students and families. It will also be identified by your positive and engaging relationships with other community leaders, both locally, statewide, and on the national level. We are in a time of change at all of these levels and we must work together to find success. Over the next year and beyond, together with Mayor Henchy, a new city manager, the city council, and other city leaders, school district staff, and our residents, we will be establishing a vision for our schools. This is one of the most critical roles that you are undertaking as it is not only going to be the driving force for our students but for the community as a whole. A sound school system is essential to Norwich's growth. In 1787, the Constitution of the United States was written. It was a way to draw on the wisdom of the Declaration of Independence that expressed people's yearning to be free and to develop their given talents. The Constitution unleashed the energies and talents of all people to create a good life. Now, in 2015, you are all charged with the same challenge. As Board of Education members, you are charged with providing the opportunities for all students to unleash their energies and celebrate their talents. This will be your legacy for the students who are impacted by your commitment, knowledge, and decision-making. Your message to us, all of us, by running for election to our Board of Education is that you believe in the value of public education with the interests of the entire school community in mind. And you will dedicate your efforts on the belief of the ability of all of our students to reach their North Star. Welcome to the Board of Education and I really look forward to our work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. I would like to add a few words to the very wonderful talk that Abby gave. You know, when we thought about the swearing-in, we thought about how important it was that this city knows that we are a city who works together, who cannot progress if our children are not well-educated, if our citizens, the roads aren't paved, and all the numerous things that both entities do for the benefit of the city. And so it is my hope that bringing us all together tonight, in front of all of you, there's many department heads, there's chiefs of the firehouses, of the police department. We are all in this together and we need to have a look to the future in order to make things different here in Norwich. I'm excited about our council. We've got some people who've been around for a while but more importantly, we have some new faces. And with new faces comes new ideas, new ways of getting the same thing done that we all want done and that's to make for good lives for the people here in Norwich. And so it's with great excitement that I start these meetings tonight with seeing you all here and knowing that we will be moving into the future working together as a city should. So I thank you all for giving your service and for putting forth the effort and time to be part of this city. Thank you all. Now you've heard Abby and I speak and we would like to give each of you a chance to say a few words if you should like. So we'll start with the council. Peter, would you like to say a few words?
Is that possible?
A few.
She's good with the gab.
Oh, yeah.
Three minutes.
No, actually the rules say you get five but we would prefer you stay a drink tonight.
I'll be shorter than that.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank you, our mayor and our superintendent for your words. They really hit home, particularly for all of us who ran to serve on this city council this year. Can't be stressed enough how important our schools are and I just want to echo that. At the end of that, I'd like to introduce my family who are here tonight. My wife Linda, our daughter Kate, our daughter Molly, and we have a new member of our family, Army Specialist Matthew DeVee who is our son-in-law. There is a lot of work ahead and I really enjoy and like this setting because I hope that we see our Board of Education on a very, very frequent basis. I always believed it wasn't enough to meet with you during budget times. This is a great way to start it. Thank you.
Joanne Filbrick. Who would have thought that I would be sitting here? I am honored and privileged and emotional beyond belief. I have sat in that audience for 11 years. I have complained. I've had opinions. And now I'm up here and I have a different viewpoint, literally and figuratively. And I want you all to know that I am here for you. You can come to me. You can complain. You can praise. You can offer suggestions. But I am here for you and I would encourage every single person in this audience, if you have an interest, a passion, or even a passing interest in your local community, stand up and get involved. And I look forward to working with the council, the mayor, the new city manager. I would enjoy working with Mr. Builder for quite some time but I don't think that's going to happen. But we're on the right and I mean that in a very positive way. But let's move forward. And I too would like to introduce my family who is sitting behind the Nystroms, my son Richard Filbrick, my grandson Hayden Filbrick, and my daughter Gretchen Filbrick. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Tucker Braddock and it's a great pleasure to be back on the Norwich City Council. I served two terms in the past, took two years off and decided I would like to have the privilege of coming back and serving the people of this community. And I'd like for you all to know that my phone numbers are available to all of you at any time, my home as well as myself. And I would encourage you all to please give me a call because I'm one person. We are one of seven and you are many of thousands. And you have lots of good ideas and I would like you all to share them with us. It's very important that we all work together and it's a great pleasure to be sitting here with our Board of Education. That is a good step, I feel, in going forward with some of the tough challenges that we have with the budgets. And I think it's the right way to be doing things. So again, I would encourage you all to, as Filbrick said, Alderwoman Filbrick said, if you have feelings about being involved as a volunteer, by all means, we certainly would welcome that. It's a great community and we'd all like to have everyone involved in this community. And with that, I shall pass it on and thank you all so much for coming this evening and it's a great honor to be here. Thank you.
My name is Stacy Gould. I am excited to be here tonight. I am humbled to be here tonight to serve on the city council. I want to thank those who encouraged me to run for suggesting this to me. I want to especially thank the officers and members of the East Great Plain Firehouse who are here tonight as well as Taffel, Yantech, Ackam, and Laurel Hill for supporting me. I promise to do you proud. I want to serve all of the citizens of Norwich. We have hard work to do but I know that we can move this city forward and I'm really looking forward to doing that. Tonight here is my father, Ron Brahman, my husband, John Gould, my daughter Allison, my son, Justin, my uncle, Stephen, my sister from another mother, Tracy, and my first boyfriend, Mark. Follow that, Jerry.
Hi, I'm Jerry Martin. I want to thank you for electing me. Two years ago, I ran and I worked my behind off and I came up just a little bit short. I didn't come to any council meetings because I wanted the people ahead of me to have every opportunity to be successful and not interfere in their affairs. Now here it is, two years later. I didn't fall down. I got knocked down. I got up. I dusted myself off and I kept going. And I think that's the key to life sometimes. It's not how you get to the place the fastest. It's the one who picks themselves up the fastest once they've been knocked down and keeps going. Right now, this city's been knocked down. We need a lot of work and we have to have everybody paddling our little canoe all in the same direction and all our paddles in unison to change things around. And I'm willing to punch in on this job and work my darndest to make things happen. I may not always agree with everything with everybody but my heart's in the right place and I look forward to serving each and every one of you. Thank you.
I'm Bill Nash. I'm going to save my five minutes for when it really counts so I want to thank everybody for voting for me again. This is my fourth term, non-consecutive. I did take a couple of years off as well to get recharged and I'm very excited about this term on the council and I look forward to doing the people's work and I promise you there'll be no stone left unturned or page left. We're going to do it and we're going to do it together as a team, all of us. And I want to look forward to working again with my BOE buddy, Robert Aldai. Thank you.
Would the treasurer like to say a few words?
My name is Michael Gualtieri and I'm going to be here tonight. I spent a few days down there already working with Josh Amher, Tony Diara, Edna, and Alvis getting my signature out there so that you can pay well.
That's important.
Very important. I intend to be a resource for all of you folks. If you ever need anything, please let me know or anybody else who needs help. My job number one is keeping your money safe and I intend to do. I have a background in the industry for a few years and I'm an employer of the city with a high regard. And I'd like to thank my wife Stacy and Lucy and other citizens of the city. created. Thank you.
Now, if the Board of Education members would like to say a few words?
Mr. Aldai, or did you begin?
I'm sorry, what?
And we're going to get you the mic, so no one will miss a word.
I'm sure everybody knows me by now. If you don't, my name is Bob Aldai. I am a lifelong citizen of City of Norwich, retired captain of the Norwich PD, I'm from...
It's for the TV. The TV needs it.
TV? Am I TV?
Yeah.
How are you doing?
Remember to tip your waders.
Start the timer. Five minutes, sir.
Now you know why I like working with you.
I am very privileged to be here. I'm honored, I'm humbled to be elected again to my second term of the Board of Education. As a lifelong resident of Norwich, a former employee, retired captain of the Norwich PD, and a dear friend to every single volunteer and paid firefighter here. As a member of the Board of Education, my goal is to work with the members of the Board of Ed and our city council to keep our taxes down. Well, you can clap, 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 clap. Politics, if you went to the last seminar that we had, or the last board meeting and the last hearing that we had, politics suck. They really do, and it's a dirty, dirty, dirty business. However, it's got to be done, and if we can keep a constant flow of communication with the city council and with us as the Board of Education, hopefully, our citizens will appreciate the hard work that we do. And with that, thank you very much.
My son Sonny, who's probably home watching, I'm sorry, Mr. Aldai, he's in bad language. My name's Angelo Yitz. After this term, it'll be my tenth year on the Board of Ed. I got off for a little while, got back on. I work for Public Works. Wednesday's my thirty-one-year anniversary, Mr. Ryan Pottier. I'm on, serving this term, it's going to be my last term. I hope to help consolidate, look at buildings, and look at ways to save money also on the board with support of the rest of my Board of Ed members. I'm on a committee that's looking at all the schools, hired a company to give us ideas on how we can save money, how we can do a better education, and, you know, ways to consolidate. It's a big issue with me, and that's why everyone is here. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Yvette Jacaruso, and you know, I would not be standing here tonight if it wasn't for the voters of Norwich electing me for the fifth term, and I want to say thank you very much. I really appreciate that. And one of the goals of the Board of Ed was to work cooperatively with the city council members, and that will be the number-one goal, so we get to sit with each other, not at budget time arguing, you know, how much we're going to get or not get, but having some wonderful conversations about how we can improve the education for the students of Norwich, because they are our future. So if we do not invest in them, we're not investing in the community. So thank you again very much. And also, I would have to thank my husband Frank, who's sitting there, because he schlepped me around to all these doors during the election cycle. He kept saying, "Again tonight? They're going to get tired of seeing you," but I guess not. So thank you very much, Frank, and thank you very much for voting for me.
Hi, I'm Joyce Warden, and I've been on the board ten years, and in particular tonight, I want to welcome our new board members, Susan and Margaret. Welcome. And Kevin, I've known it for so long now, I'm sorry. And Kevin, welcome to all three of you. And the reason that's especially important, I believe, is that it is a board, after ten years, I've seen this, where a board with people who are very different, we come from so many different viewpoints, that that is the strength. And so we have three new people to bring a new perspective, a new way of looking at things. I know our discussions will be richer, and it will enable us to work together as a team to do the right thing for our kids and the right thing for the city of Norwich. Thank you.
A few words from my favorite poem. "Two roads diverged in yellow wood, and sorry I could not follow both. Long I stood and looked down one as long as I could to where it bent in the undergrowth; then took the other as just despair, but having perhaps the better claim, because it was grassy and wanted wear." That's what this election has produced, taking the less traveled road. But Norwich in itself is at a crossroads, a fork in the road. We've gone down one, and now we're going to go down a different one, because one road leads to failure and despair, and the other to hope and progress. And with this new council and this new board, hopefully, we'll see that hope and progress come to fruition. So I want to thank everyone that cast a ballot. I want to thank the members of the council, whom I know we're going to be working closely with, and the collegiality that we share on the Board of Education, despite party affiliations or different viewpoints. We all seem to get along, we all like each other, and we will like our new members just as well. So Norwich needs a new start, and I say it has to begin with education, because education is the foundation on which our society is built. And if we ever hope to prosper and progress, we need to start at the beginning. Thank you.
Al Daniels, I'd like to thank everyone for their votes and coming out, sharing this evening with us, that this is a new change. This is something new and different, brilliant and beautiful, and you're all part of it. So thank you. Give yourselves a hand for coming out. We continue to want and seek and ask for change. There's got to be a way, there's got to be something different. And as I embark on this term on the Board of Education, the only real thing that I really want to do different is, as a team, the city council, the Board of Education, we come up with a plan that, we're friends. We were friends when we all sat around the table just across the hall in July and said, "You'd be good on the city council, you'd be good on the Board of Education." And it got written up, and we were happy. And then the winter comes, and with the blooming of the trees, all of a sudden, it's like we don't know each other anymore. We're enemies. If I can do one thing, is I'd love to see that change. I would love for us to come to you, the citizens of Norwich, with our strategic plan that we don't have to fight over, because we came to it as the plan for where we want Norwich as a city and as an educational system to go. Be part of that. Help us. I'd like to end thanking the person who made all this possible, because I was one of those people that was more than fine sitting in the audience pointing and saying, "You guys don't know what you're doing." They said, "What's going on here?" But then she started getting involved, and my competitive side came out. So Diane Daniels, this is all your fault.
Shame on me, I forgot to introduce my lovely wife, our registrar of voters and administrator of elections, Diane Slope.
Hi, I'm what? My name is Kevin Seitani. I just want to say, I want to sincerely thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight to witness this special moment in Norwich's history. It means everything to the Royal City. We are all greatly humbled and honored to be chosen by the people of Norwich who have confidence in us as the newly board, as the newly-elected board members, to make the essential changes in our education for the sake of our students and our community. I chose to run for the Board of Education because I want to continue to help students critically think about the world they live in, and to help students achieve their dream to a college education or the pursuit of getting a job as an alternative after graduating from high school. At the end of it all, seeing our students go through his or her educational journey and becoming successful in life is truly rewarding. I am one of those fortunate people who wants to reflect back many years from now, knowing that I made a difference in my community just by serving on this board and being there for our students. Thank you very much. To thank my cousin Thomas for being here tonight, his girlfriend Carol, my sister Tiffany, her boyfriend Zach, my uncle Mitchell Friedman, and my aunt Patty Keener. Thank you.
I can't beat that. My name is Margaret Bicott. I'd like to thank all of you very much for my election to the Board of Ed. I'd like to... Joyce, sorry. I'm new to the Board of Ed, but I've been a longtime resident of Norwich since about fourth grade I lived here. Little breaks here and there when I went to college and things like that, but my children were raised here, went to public school here. My grandchildren went to public school here. So I know the school, I know the city, I love the community. I probably will never leave, and I want it to get better. I want our schools to be better. I want our students to grow up and have a goal in life, and it only starts with a good education, and I do hope to make that a fulfillment of the Board of Ed and all of you here. Thanks again.
Hi, Susan Thomas. I'm not good at speaking, so bear with me. I want to thank you all. I want to tell you that my number-one mission, and my reason for wanting to run for Board of Ed, is that from personal experience, I know that there is nothing that is more important than education. No matter how far you go, every single thing that you learn adds to the fabric that makes you the person you eventually become. It is critical that every child, regardless of their basic ability, is given the tools and the opportunity and the encouragement to excel at whatever they are best at. Some will be brain surgeons, some will be carpenters, some will be plumbers, some will be lawyers, some will be teachers, we hope, and we want those teachers to stay in our community, to teach more generations. The value of an education can never be overstated, and it's important for the community to be able to build that we offer the very best in educational services to our community, because that will draw in new people, more business, and more strength for our economy, which is also very important, and will help with the school budgets. Aside from that, to my children who could not be here tonight, my son Rick, who lives in Florida with his wife Christie, and my grandchildren Casey, Samantha, and Justin, and to my daughter Carrie, who has her own business here in Connecticut and is working tonight, and my son-in-law Charlie, and my grandson Connor, and a very special person in my life, my adopted sister Bonnie, who has been so incredibly supportive of me since I've known her, since we moved to Norwich. And I would like to thank them all, and I would like to say that I finally accomplished something. You elected me.
Yes?
Excuse me, I forgot to introduce my mother, Jeannie Martin, my sister Janet, and my girlfriend Avi. Thank you.
Well, if everybody has acknowledged everyone, they need to. We don't want anyone to leave. In case you did get forgotten, we are having a reception in honor of the newly-elected people across the hall in room 335. There's some goodies and some refreshments, and we would really like all of you to come. And with that, I will entertain a motion and a second to adjourn.
Give it to Tucker.
We'll see if they're quite that eager next time. Alderman Nash, and I believe Alderwoman Gould. All in favor?